I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, September 6, 2022, regular meeting agenda for Lincoln County Commission. Under routine business, we've got your payroll and reports in your shared folders. We have board action to approve consent agenda items. Sean mentioned to me that before the meeting here, under consent agenda item number four, the name should be Jordan instead of Jacob. So with that proviso, does anybody have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Can we approve the agenda first, please?
Oh.
With that change?
Oh, yeah.
I have a motion to approve with the change.
Got a motion. Do we have a second to approve the agenda?
I'll second it.
Motion and second. Clerk will call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. Okay, now we can move on to consent agenda items.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
You have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and second. Any discussion hearing on clerk call roll?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. All right, now is the time and place for public comment. If anybody would like to come forward and speak, we would welcome to hear you.
Betty Otten, 4678-7270, Third Street in T. I wasn't able to be here on August 23rd for the public input meeting regarding the Lincoln County Justice Center, so I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you to each of you as commissioners, TEGRA, and the Courthouse Improvement Advisory Committee for all the work that has been done on this project. As Lincoln County's options have been reduced to just one year on leasing a Minnehaha County courtroom and five years or less for housing our prisoners at the Minnehaha County Jail, I truly appreciate the commissioners working together on the plans for the expansion of the Justice Center and building our own jail here in Canton. It never seems to be the right time, but we're now forced into building to provide these services for our residents per state law. I truly believe the only option of the two presented is building on the property west of town with future expansion available. Building in this current location would land lock us for any future expansion with no available space for a jail. Again, I want to thank each of you as commissioners for your commitment to law enforcement, especially during this past election cycle, and for unity in resolving both of these critical services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
Good morning. My name is Linda Montgomery, 320 Elm Street, Fairview, South Dakota. I have written a speech many, many times today and yesterday throughout since Friday. I am concerned about election integrity. I went down to Nebraska to their election integrity forum, and I learned that every machine in this country that is Dominion, that is almost any machine, can be hacked. The other issue is that there are many people in this state that have been trying to get public information. Election data is public information, and we have been denied. We went, I went out Friday. There was an order that election material from 2020 and 2022 needed to be saved. We went out to a conference out in Pierre that legislatures were at, auditors were at, many of you were on, including our auditor was on the Zoom, and South Dakota canvassing was there and with their lawyer, and about 100 concerned citizens about election integrity. I was, that meeting went very well. The auditors spoke up. They felt that maybe we were against them, and we were not, but they also found out that what they were given by the Secretary of State was incorrect. The information that people were asking for, the CBRs, they indeed had, and they were told by the Secretary of State that they did not have access to them. An expert in computers showed them, and it was brought up, that they indeed do have the CBRs that we have requested. The cast vote record is nothing more than a form of electronic. They help, they contain all the votes that were done during an election. Those are all public information. There is no proprietary information. There is no names, no way to identify who voted for who. They are by precinct. The, it went well. The auditors agreed to work with legislatures and the experts to get this data so they could give them to we, the people. The, on the way home, it was found out that the judge vacated that order to that now election materials from 2020 could be destroyed. This was after we had this wonderful meeting where it was determined that this information had been available and now was gone. I am here today to say and to express the need. I want the public information that we are entitled to. Elections are not done in secret. Yes, we cast our ballot in secret, but the rest of the information is public, and I would appreciate you being able to stand with us and get that information. I was one of those people that doubted that South Dakota had any kind of problem with their voting records. That's what I wanted to believe. Today, with what has happened in the past months, and especially what has happened in the past week, I now believe that we have fraud in our voting systems, and we have no reason to have a third party, which is ESNS and the tabulating machines. The machines can be hacked, and they have no place in Lincoln County, no place in South Dakota. Every business does an audit. South Dakota does not. We do not, are the only fourth state, one of four, that does not do a post-election audit. That is on us, we, the people, to do now an audit, because I don't believe we had a free, fair, and definitely not a transparent election. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to provide public comment?
Don Hoffman, 47331, 273rd Street. Just a couple of observations or comments from the public utility building or the public courtrooms and all that. I was at that meeting. I'm kind of a numbers guy. Being on the school board at Harrisburg and that, we were the fastest growing school district for three or four years in the country, not just the state of South Dakota, but in the whole country and that, so we were figuring budgets and stuff. And I heard a lot of different numbers. One was 2% growth rate. You're right. The guy was right. You've got to grow at least 2% to 3% to maintain your same mill levy on that bond. If that bond is weighted, which means that you make smaller payments upfront and you make the bigger payments later on because of the growth will help pay for that, that's correct. 2%, 3%, that's just a normal growth rate. You've got to figure that in because that's what things grow at. If they don't, you're in trouble. Another number I was concerned about, the gentleman that said his taxes went up $300, but we told him that, no, we're not raising your taxes. Two numbers that determine how much you pay to the county: the mill levy and your assessed value. You multiply them two together, and that's what you're going to end up paying for taxes, dollars and cents. There's no other way. Neither one of them can stand alone. They've got to be multiplied together in order to come up with a amount of taxes. So it used to be when we were on the school board, you'd go and ask, okay, how much money do we need? Okay, we need X number of dollars. We send that into the county, and they determine what the mill levy is. Basically, the school district was determining what the mill levy was because of what they were asking for. It used to be what you needed for money. Nobody maxed out their mill levy. Nowadays, all your government entities, the first thing they do, well, what's our maximum? Okay, that's what we're going to assess that. Is it right? I don't know. But we've become a society where we want wants and not what we need. And as for what we need, I don't know. But we need a specific plan. I mean, if I hear one more time that we're not raising our taxes, we're not responsible for it, it's the other guy like this, my votes no. And I'm sure there's a lot of other people who are thinking the same way. You know, are we running these courtrooms 10, 12 hours a day? Can we run two separate sites? Maybe these courtrooms and just start out with a few less courtrooms at the jail center or something? We need to come up with a very specific plan at the beginning, because if we start throwing numbers out there, and like I said, I'm a numbers guy, things don't drive, boom. My decision is made real fast of what I'm going to vote. Just a little free advice.
Thank you. Thank you, Don. Anybody else? Okay, seeing nobody, we'll turn to commissioner reports. Do any commissioners have any issues they want to address?
Madam Chair, just a, I'm sure all of you got the letter from the Minnehaha County concerning the Juvenile Detention Center. I think Commissioner Poppins has contacted, I have contacted, is Jamie Crowett, who is the Juvenile Detention Center Director, as they are in the process of not renovating, but going to build a new one, of which we are a participating county along with, I don't know how many other, Commissioner Poppins, there's quite a few. And we all share in that detention center for our youth, where they unfortunately go. So that could be, that could be a budget impact. They have no numbers at this time, which is a little disconcerting, and I don't know if they finalized anything, but they did send us a letter out, and I was especially taken by the fact that it will, as they underline this, is will have a potential impact on your budget. That's kind of a statement that leads you to wonder how much of an impact. The other thing I'd remind the commissioners that this week, we have a Southeast District meeting at, we are sponsoring here at the 4H Grounds, and that will be on tomorrow at about 11:30. So we will have our state director coming down, and I also intend to bring up the fact of possible legislation that Senate, or Representative Otten has to help counties pay for the increased costs of license plates and things. We're going to discuss that. So anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners?
Briefly, Mr. Chairman, I just want to share with the public the importance of the information getting out to the public. And on the 21st of this month in T at 7:00 PM, I'm going to be hosting informational and correspondence with the public concerning this topic. Hopefully, Mr. Strasberg can join us. There should be a presentation that be available. I spoke with Mr. Strasberg. That information will be available to us and to the public on the 19th of, so I'm hopeful that there will be other meetings, at least one in Canton for the, for the whole county, but I took it upon myself to request from the City of T, the city all, on the 21st at 7:00 PM, so the public can come there if we don't find time for any other correspondence. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Poppins. One thing I do want to share with the public is recently, the Game Fish and Parks Department, their commission held a meeting out at Good Earth State Park, and the commissioners took a dim view of some of the department's plans for building a campground out at Spring Creek, and essentially, what the Game Fish and Parks Director had said is, it's a bad idea and it's not going to happen. And so I appreciate all the facts out at, or I appreciate all the citizens from the Spring Creek area who provided their input to Game Fish and Parks. Game Fish and Parks will be taking final action on the issue in December, but many of the commissioners took a dim view of the issue and decided it's a bad plan and it's a bad fit for the neighborhood. Okay, so we're on to regular business, and the first issue is a public hearing for the 2023 provisional budget. So the way this will work is proponents of the budget will stand up and speak if they want to, and then opponents can stand up and speak. You don't necessarily have to be a proponent or opponent of any specific issue, but that is the way that generally a public hearing is broken down to. Each person will, of course, have five minutes to speak on the budget, and because now is the time and place for the hearing, I would ask any proponents for the 2023 provisional budget to provide any input they want to. Okay, seeing none. Are there any opponents of the 2023 provisional budget who would like to stand up and speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Just so the public understands, the, there will be no action taken by the commission today. That would just simply a public hearing for the public to speak out against it. Not too many takers at 8:30 on a Tuesday morning after Labor Day, huh? Okay, next issue on the agenda is board action to move a regularly scheduled commission meeting. Madam Auditor, could you speak to that?
So the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners is having their convention on the 12th and the 13th, so I'm requesting that we move the next meeting till the 15th.
Okay, you've heard the request. Gentlemen, do you have any action you'd like to take on it?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion to move the commission meeting from the 13th of September to the 15th. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing non clerk call roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Okay, we'll have a commission meeting on the 15th of September at 8:30 instead of the regularly scheduled Tuesday. Next issue, discussion of board action regarding mileage reimbursement. Madam Auditor?
So we received notification from the state that they are doing an adjustment to the mileage reimbursement rate, and we haven't really looked at ours in a while, so I thought maybe we would take a look at it. What the state proposes is that they do 28 cents per mile when a personal vehicle is used and a county vehicle are available, or you do 51 cents a mile when a personal vehicle is used and a county vehicle is not available. And that's the action that I'm requesting that you do today.
What's our current policy, state?
We just get paid 41 cents a mile regardless of if there's a vehicle there or not.
When was that policy last adopted?
Probably 2016. We do have, you know, the county vehicle that was given to the auditor, treasurer, and the registered deeds. We have that vehicle available now, and anybody could use it. So we have more availability of a vehicle than we previously have, and that's why I was thinking, if we change this around, it will make it more economical for the county.
Do you have a recommendation, Madam Auditor?
Yep, 28 cents per mile when a, when a personal vehicle is used and the county vehicles are available, and 51 cents per mile when a personal vehicle is used and a county vehicles are not available.
Well, given the, given the fact that we do have a vehicle, and it is usable, and with the price of fuel today, I think those are reasonable. Mr. Chair, I would move for approval on recommendation from our auditor?
Got a motion to adopt the requested action as stated in the agenda. Is there a second?
Second for a quick discussion.
Go ahead.
Madam Auditor, who do you propose is going to monitor if a vehicle was available or not at the time someone may or may not have used their personal vehicle?
Who's going to monitor it? Well, I'm just going to trust and faith in the people that we've hired as department heads, to be honest.
Okay, thank you.
That's, I guess, that's the concern. It lends to a, we don't have a motor pool. We don't have that infrastructure in place to identify. And what I get a little concerned about is someone saying, well, now we have a vehicle. It's not available for me, but it was available for somebody else. I think it's going to lend to potentially other issues that could come up, and people may say, hey, I, you know, I want to have a vehicle for county use if I'm going to an event. And I don't know if this is going to be an issue today, but it might be an issue in two years. It might be an issue in five years, so.
Well, and most departments have a vehicle, so them not having a vehicle to use is pretty rare. You know, the, the three elected offices, the auditor, registered deeds, and treasurer didn't have a vehicle before. Now there is a vehicle available, so those were really the only offices that didn't have something.
Okay, very good. Do the, do the individual offices maintain records of vehicle usage? Got a question, Madam Auditor. Do the individual offices maintain records of vehicle usage?
Yes, there's mileage reported on, every month on the agenda.
Okay, so that can be used to track this? Okay. Any other discussion?
All the questions.
Hearing non clerk will call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. Thank you. Next agenda item for discussion is discussion board action for court storage. Mr. Golden?
Commissioner Landine asked me to go ahead and get a estimate in order to scan in the court records that are left in the basement. At this point in time, we've had two events where we've had the court reporters' records gotten wet. A good chunk of them have been damaged to the point that they can only be destroyed. Those two leaks luckily did not make their way into the basement where the records are kept for the court system. There's two separate areas. One of them used to be the men's bathrooms back when they were being used, and there's water pipes above all those records. The records that are on the other side that has a vault, the vault doesn't have anything in it, but the room where those records are being kept has water pipes above them as well. And so if we have a leak in one of those, we're going to lose those records. So the court system has been scanning in some of the records. We contacted the same company they've been using, and they gave an estimate of $52,000 in order to scan those records and remove them from the basement as an alternative for filing, finding other storage options. So I just wanted to go ahead and give you an update. Commissioner Landine had asked for this to be on the agenda, and just so that you're aware of one of those options besides coming up with additional storage space. I do believe the court system is concerned about having off-site storage because they can't get to the records, and in order for them to go ahead and put things into storage, then they have to obviously leave site as well.
So, long story short, Bill, if you spend $52,000 and we scan the records, we won't have a problem trying to find a place to store records off-site or a facility here because that old courthouse isn't adequate anymore.
And to be clear, these are the old records. They have a bunch of active files at the moment that they currently have put into their system, and they're taking the responsibility for all the active and current files to be scanned in to get rid of these. These are all the ones that they statutorily have to keep for a period of time that would be outside and has never been in an electronic system. So this is not all of their records. This is just the portion that they have to store, and they're not electronic.
So it'll eliminate the storage problem?
Yes.
So do we have to keep these forever?
I am unsure how long the court has to keep some of these records, but I believe that they keep these files for, they turn them into microfiche at some point.
Depends on what kind of case file it is?
Yes, but they keep a lot of them for, I mean, we have to keep them for at least 15.
15 years?
Yes.
You know, for example, if it's a homicide record, they have to keep it indefinitely till the person finishes their term in prison, either naturally or unnaturally. So it all just depends. So some of the records could be there for a significant length of time, and others may not have to be there. Bill, I know that the Minnehaha County Clerk of Courts maintains records off-site. I know this because I routinely ask for records in other older court cases, and they tell me, well, give me a day or two because they have to go off-site to go get them. So Minnehaha County must be storing records off-site. Did you look into, other than the $52,000 quote to scan the records in, did you look to see what the cost of off-site storage would be?
No, I wasn't asked to do that, so I just, I know that, I believe John has looked into possible storage units that are acclimatized so that we could keep them, they're like container boxes, as an option.
Who would do this?
ADS is the company. They're currently doing the scanning for the courts. I talked to our IT director. It was the ones he recommended. He's worked with them. They've done our records in the past, so we have a relationship with them, and so.
So would they have to work with their buildings and grounds to physically move these records, et cetera, et cetera, or?
They physically would move them to their location. They figure there's 77 boxes of files, and they're estimating that it's going to be $400 a box to scan them in.
And they can do this in a week, two weeks, a month, or?
They would move it to their site, and then as the jobs permit, they would get to that and then scan those in. But they would actually have them off-site in their warehouse, and they would hold them until they could get them all scanned.
Is that company sanctioned or approved by UJS?
They're using them currently.
Okay.
There are locals who falls for them.
Okay.
Bill, are we to take action today?
No, I'm not asking you to take action today. Just was giving you the information.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other questions for Mr. Golden?
They're secure then while they have these, while they're scanning them?
That is my understanding. They currently have other UJS files that they are working with and have stored, so yes.
Any other discussion on that agenda item? Okay, hearing none, and Mr. Golden, don't get too comfortable. Board action to approve the courtroom lease agreement Minnehaha County has amended.
Minnehaha County, what we, the commission had approved the contract that they had sent previously, which was going to extend use of a courtroom in Minnehaha County for one year at $800,000. Their commission, when they took action, reduced that time to six months, increased it by 7%, which makes it roughly $53,000 for a six-month period of time. I believe we're already in that current period of time, and so they've sent it back with an amendment, and so it's up to you as the commission to decide whether or not you want to accept their their amendment to those terms or not. But we will be without that facility either immediately if you reject it or at the end of the six-month period, which I believe may run, I think it's.
It started in July.
It started in July, so it'll be done at the end of the year.
Bill, is this strictly a six-month contract, or is it renewable for another six months?
I believe this is it.
This is it, six months?
We're done.
And it's over?
Yep.
The initial estimate was it was going to be for a year to 18 months that they were willing to do it.
Yeah.
They had sentenced the contract for another year, but that's been reduced. So we would probably have to look at, at the end of six months, we're going to be having to look at finding another location for a courtroom if they're going to bring back the civil cases. I would suggest that the multi-purpose room down in the basement, it's already, my understanding from Jake, that it's already been wired for Court Smart, and so it's available to set up as courtroom. We have all the same problems with the multi-purpose room that we actually have with 2B as far as having access and some of the other things, but we could use it for civil cases or for non-jury trial, motion hearings, things along those lines. So I do think we need to start a conversation with the presiding judge about additional space for another judge to come down here and hear the civil cases, make something available.
So they're aware that, where they would meet?
Yes. The commission room is also currently wired for Court Smart, so this room could be available as well.
Okay. I think with our urgency that we have, we need to, if your recommendation is to sit with her and discuss it, I would volunteer for that if you would like. Also, if there's equipment that needs to get purchased, we need to get a fast-track because equipment can take quite a while to acquire, so.
And UGS is usually one that supplies all of the Court Smart equipment.
But they'll, I doubt they have it sitting on their shelf.
Probably not.
Mr. Chair, given the fact that the reality of the situation, I would move that we accept the six-month contract at $53,000, Bill, and change?
Yes.
I'll second that with a caveat, the understanding is we have to take action to find the alternative for after that, so.
Got a motion and second. Is there any discussion? The only discussion that I'll provide is, I've always taken the position that the leasing of the courtroom should be on a prorata basis rather than the county extracting a flat lease agreement from us. I've always believed that we should only use for what we pay, or excuse me, only pay for what we use, so I don't think it's any surprise, but I'm not supportive of this agreement, and I haven't voted for it since it's been in place before. Thank you.
Fortunately, we won't have to worry about that in six months.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk will call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Ahrens?
No. Motion passes. The next thing I need is, is there a motion to recess out of regular session and convene as Drainage Board?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Clerk will call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Ahrens?
Yes. We're now in session as a Drainage Board, and typically what that means is if there's any folks here who would like to address the board to provide public comment, we'll invite them up to the podium now to speak.
Curtis Sweater, 471-50283, Worthing. Just, can I use this computer in front of me?
Yes, sir.
Place to put a jump drive in?
Why don't you hold on a second there?
All right, thank you. I guess I'm here today to talk about a portion of Snake Creek, south of Worthing, South Dakota. Specifically, a portion that runs along County Highway 117 and within the county right of way. So the map that I'm trying to show you is right there along 117. Snake Creek is the blue line that will run in the highway for about a half a mile around 283rd Street. It's my understanding, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, that it's the county's responsibility to maintain that creek or drainage ditch since it does run within the counties, within the counties right of way. I took some pictures the other day of what that looks like. This is a picture of the ditch running along County Road 117 on the west side of the highway. It's looking north from 283rd Street. And if anybody can tell me where that ditch is in that scenario, I'd greatly appreciate it because right now it's all kind of overgrown with cattails and other things. This is further north, looking south from where Snake Creek meets up with the highway, and then it's supposed to head south along the county ditch. Again, there's plenty of standing water sitting there because the Snake Creek was cleaned out last year through adjacent landowners' property through that area, but we ended it at where it should be, the county's responsibility to maintain that ditch. So there's plenty of water sitting there. There is no water making it to the bridge at this point. And then I took one more photo just looking south from 283rd Street. And again, it's all overgrown with cattails. It's poorly drained in that area. Granted, that area is relatively flat. There's not a lot of drop in that area. And as you guys should be, are you guys are aware, there is a planned development district that is going in north of that site that will add to, potentially add to, the water that we're going to be seeing coming down there, especially if the water, if it's wet or if we're getting back into some wet years. I know it's been dry the last couple of years. In addition, I did reach out to the DOT to inquire about Highway 18 and about what they're doing for drainage across Highway 18. And all of the culverts in the mile and a half or two-mile stretch that lead to this area are all being upsized. They're either adding culverts or making them larger, which will allow for more water to come down here. What we're asking for today, or what I'm asking for today, is the county to maintain this ditch to help with the flow of water through this area. I know that members of my family have reached out to the Highway Department with little to no success in getting this ditch maintained.
Mr. Sweater, I think you answered my question, but I was going to ask you, have you sat down with anybody from the county here yet to discuss this? And I think you just answered that question for me.
Okay. All right.
Curtis, you said? Just for my records, all the, all of those culverts on Highway 18 are being oversized?
The ones that, I just reached out about the ones that lead to this area. So there's a mile, mile and a half, was it two-mile stretch in there where those culverts all lead down to? I reached out to, I can't remember the name off the top of my head, but they're all either being upsized, or either going from a 30 to a 36-inch culvert, or in some cases, they're going from two culverts to three culverts.
Okay. Curtis, I took this road last week and drove real slow because I looked at it and I, I saw that there's still water there in a lot of places. And I thought, you know, as dry as it's been and the little precipitation, I thought maybe it would be drier than what it was, but I'm amazed there's still a lot of water there.
Yeah, and there's, well, there's a lot of, there's some wells that flow into there. There's some artesian wells that are probably keeping some of that water there. But then again, like if we go back to this picture right here, this one right here, you know, I don't have a good picture of it, but this is where Snake Creek butts up to the highway, so it would be in, in this area, right in there.
Yep.
That's where we cleaned it out to, or that's where John Sweater and his family cleaned it out to. There's water sitting there, but it is dry under that bridge. There is, all the way up to that bridge and under that bridge, it is completely dry. And it's flat, it's low lying. Without being able to get the water to flow, it has the potential to back up onto some of my dad's land, as well as it has the potential to back all the way up to where we live. It's happened before in the past. I mean, granted, the last 18, 24 months, it's been really dry, but I, we can't think that that's going to last. And we are trying to work with neighbors and stuff to clean out other portions of this creek, but unfortunately, we kind of need the county's help to try to get this last little stretch cleaned out so we can hopefully get the water to flow away from us a little bit better.
How long a stretch is that?
Half mile, about a half, approximately.
And it consumes quite a few acres?
Yeah, because there's some ditches that run from the south that all meet up in the adjacent quarter there. And then also the town of Worthing, most of their drainage comes down through there as well. Oh, both.
Curtis, so once it turns away from the county, 117, has that been cleaned out?
Portions of it have.
Right adjacent to it though, yeah?
What's that?
The property right adjacent to it, has that been cleaned out?
Not recently, but we're working, I got some plans in place to try to get that accomplished yet this fall.
When you got water sitting in the ditch, that means something downstream of it is not flowing, and I don't, there's not going to be any objection from the county for getting that road cleaned out. It's, you know, it's, you've got to have a place for it to go, obviously, and the cattails don't help, it slows it down.
Yep.
But if we don't, if we clean out the cattails, but the water, the cattails just come back, I mean, the objective obviously is to, to clean it out further. I know quite a ways down it got cleaned out, so, but I think in conjunction, do you have the property owners willing to discuss, or what's the kind of status?
I've been in, I've been in contact with the adjacent property owners that are willing for discussion there, and we're going to have some further discussion on it as well. But we did clean out, so just, so John Sweater, his family cleaned out the portion of Snake Creek that's up here. They started work on this area right here and got to about there before last winter set in and some rain set in. Before rain kind of, kind of curtailed that, and my family has cleaned out Snake Creek from this area right here, all the way through the property that we control, I guess, from that area right there, all the way to the 471st Avenue's all been, at one point or another has been cleaned out.
That one parcel there hasn't been cleaned out yet then to the?
So the portion that we still have left to go is, would be through, would be from that, well, right where my cursor is at there, to right there. That's left to go yet, but.
Is there a lot of utilities that you know in that road ditch?
On the county road? I think, I'm not, I can't, I can't speak for that. I don't know.
Terry, or Mr. Sweater, you got any more comments? Terry, you got anything you want to say about the?
I'll take more comments, but let's try to knock one issue down at a time here. Terry, you got anything you want to say about this?
Yeah, several years ago, Kent Sweater had approached me about doing that ditch cleaning along there, and I told him, yep, we'll do it. Soon as I get, we'll get it on the list to do. But I know that he wasn't very happy, it didn't happen last year because we ran out of time, didn't happen the year before because we just didn't have time. So it's on the list to do, but like I said, we're trying to get things done typically, you know, again, as I've told you before, normally in the fall, we'll go rent another machine to, so we can, you know, have two machines doing ditch cleaning, you know, but roads come first. And when we got road maintenance to do, I mean, we got to get that done first, then when we have time, then we'll catch up on drainage. So, and typically, you know, we'll start something like that late September, early October, and we'll go until we can, until it snows or freezes, so.
Terry, how long do you think this project would take? Couple days?
Yeah, probably a couple days. I think everything there is going to have to be hauled away, so.
Okay.
I mean, anyhow, and it's, a lot of it's going to be pretty sloppy stuff, so that's probably going to be trying to find a place for it, rather than bringing it all the way down to the pit, that's going to take more time, so it might be a week, I don't know.
And then how many guys does it take to do that, two?
Well, you'd have a guy on the machine with a tab flagger. I don't know, it depends on how many trucks you got.
Okay.
Like I said, I don't, I don't think any of that, you know, I don't know that they'd want it sitting, you know, if we could throw all that material in their pasture, I'm sure they don't want that, but, so we end up hauling it away somewhere, so. And if we go down to our pit with it, then it's going to take longer.
Okay.
It's going to be pretty sloppy stuff. I know several years ago, you know, they commented about the cattails, we've been spraying them, you know, but that's something that, they keep coming back, you know. I mean, Russ gets out there and sprays on them and knocks them back, and, you know, so. And a couple of years ago, when it was first brought to us, there wasn't that many cattails in there because we just got done with a cycle of spraying in there. And I know that, that a lot of the area south of 283rd, is it there? There's quite a bit of that area in there that probably doesn't need to be cleaned because there was water sitting in it two years ago in that area. You know, there are some high spots, you know, in there. You know, so, but again, it's on the list. We'll get to it.
I think you'd, you'd make us and the public that's here to talk about it to say it's high on the list as far as pecking order?
Well, it should be by now. I mean, again, you know, typically the list is whoever comes in first. You know, we got a lot of requests, you know, and again, this has been on the list for probably two years now, but, you know, every time we're getting ready to go to it, you know, fall comes, rain comes, I mean, so.
Thank you, Terry. Additional public comment?
John Sweater, 805 E 63rd Street, Sioux Falls. So again, the, the tract, as Curtis stated, we've had this cleared out this last year, and we were in the process of cleaning all the way in through this territory when it rained. And the excavator was then under about two foot of water again. And he left it sit there for a while thinking this rain would clear out. And when it didn't, he finally waited out there, got his excavator and drove it out again, and that's where that has sat at, at that point. So again, as Curtis mentioned, it's cleared through the property up to about this point. We have to clear another area here, another area here. We needed about another day and a half, two days, and we would have had that cleaned through that area. There is a stretch along here, and again, this is the half-mile stretch that he's referencing. It's real close to that half-mile right there. There is a stretch, as Terry had mentioned, that may need just some general cleaning. It is an area that seems, because there's not a lot of drop in elevation. But the biggest area is probably right here. It is completely backlogged with water. There is a, under a highway box culvert. This originally was supposed to come out through here, run through here and come around. And at some point in life, I believe the county put it down the highway here instead of looping out into this direction. So this box culvert right here that goes underneath 117 now allows water to come from this side and backflow this direction instead of going west to east. It actually now comes east to west because of the buildup back here. That at one point, I believe, was supposed to have been plugged or closed at some point was, is my understanding it, that that was going to be closed off, that it could not flow east to west. That never happened, and again, that goes back in records a long time back that just never happened. And then there's a stretch right in this area too that really needs some thorough cleaning. And then underneath the culvert here under the 283rd, and then there's a culvert going under a driveway here, the culverts are maybe a foot to two foot higher than the elevation of the ditch, so they would have to be somehow with an excavator pulled out or cleaned out down to, down to their depth. The only utility that I'm aware of is some telephone lines from about 1962. And whether they're still in existence or not anymore, I don't know, but I don't think there's any other utilities that are in this area that I've ever been aware of. Real water is across the highway, if I remember correctly, on this side, as my recollection serves, so. And we are working to get this out, but there's still now a little water sitting in there that we've had just enough that it will just retain in this spot to and back up in this stretch here, but we can't get anything to flow through it. If this were cleared out, it would flow, we're digging it deeper and wider to allow it to flow better.
John, do you know who, uh, you referenced just now, a guy having a driveway culvert there? Have you been in touch with that person, or you know who that is?
Standing right in front of you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, you're aware of what the consequences are if we get it flowing? And do you want the county to fix that, or are you gonna do it yourself?
Well, you can let it collapse, and then everything will be completely, uh, backlogged, but that was not a culvert that was put in uh, by us, that was put in through whatever county did it, whenever they put this ditchway through here. And again, that, that did not exist at some point of its life, it used to come out, come around, and then come underneath the highway again.
So, it wasn't meant to handle all that water?
It was not something that, that our family had ever installed a culvert there. And it is a, a box culvert, it's probably a six, eight foot wide by six, eight foot tall, concrete box culvert, so it was nothing that we'd have ever installed, that was done on behalf of the county, or whoever did the roadway at that point to change that, so. And it's the same unit as right here that comes underneath two hundred and eighty-third street. They're identical box culverts, I think they're the same size, I haven't taken the dimensions, but I think they're the same size, aren't they? Yeah, so. But those would both be, uh, stamped the same era, same time, whoever put them in, so. And the box culvert is in the ditch, by the way, it's not, these, these culverts are in the ditch, uh, ditchway, they're not onto private land, they're, they're in the right of way.
Okay.
So, that's where they would be at.
John, if that, uh, if that happens, that this gets done, and that expedites the water, will that adversely affect that portion where, um, down more, down, over now, down, right straight, I'm over your cursor there? Will that adversely affect that area there that isn't finished?
Well, our intent is that we can get this finished before this gets done, or about the same time.
Okay.
The excavator that we had hired has now taken some projects, uh, it kinda north, northwest, where I, I think he's found a new niche in life for removing grain bins from these storms that have happened. So, he's got free money up in that area from insurance companies, said he doesn't have to come down and dig mud, so. So, I think he's happier up there. Um, but we have been in touch with two different excavation companies to see what their schedule is. And, and our property starts where the cursor's at here and comes to here, and then we come back up around this loop. This little loop is actually fairly clean, but it, again, it needs a little touch-up. This is the area that we really need to concentrate on, and then this little section does run through an adjoining neighbor that I believe Curtis has been in contact with, just to whatever extent, I, I've not visited with him personally, but Curtis has.
So, when that all gets done, that'll push a lot of that water?
It, yeah, is, it'll push it as fast as it can flow with a one percent grade. But, but at least right now, it's, it, right now, it's a negative two percent grade.
There's no wave action on that one there.
Back that way, uh, but yes, um, and, and we're not, you know, it, your, your grade level from this mile stretch is maybe a three foot elevation, maybe a two foot elevation, but with, with no access for it being opened, it's, like I say, it's right now, it's, it's got a damming system to it, unfortunately. And if we add a scheduling time, too, on the county's behalf, then that also then pushes us and the excavator crew that we need to hire to finish the project, but it seems just when it gets dry enough to allow us to get somebody in there and actually do a good job, we get another one or two inches, luckily, that we've had that rain this year, but it, it sits there. And, and it doesn't move anywhere, so we can't, uh, can't do anything with it, unfortunately, so. But that's our intent as one of the adjoining landowners, and, and probably the majority of that right now. Uh, and like I say, we did clean out a lot of it this last year, but, uh, we needed about another day and a half, two days, and we'd have been through our, our territory, so. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Any other public comment?
I'm sorry, I walked in late, what portion of the meeting are we?
We're, uh, if you wanna address the drainage board, now is the time and place to do it.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Tom Stendrum, I live at four seven one zero eight two hundred and seventy-sixth Street, Harrisburg, South Dakota. Um, as most of you know, I've appeared before this body multiple times, uh, with the flooding, uh, persistent flooding issues that we have. I'm here before the drainage board, uh, so that I can make another appeal to see that if we can get some kind of a solution, whether at long-term, or at least get some kind of a plan in place, so that we can correct some of these drainage issues. Do I have the ability to put a picture up? I didn't bring a jump drive.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So, area we're discussing is, uh, two hundred and seventy-sixth Street or Highway one sixteen and four hundred and seventy-first Street. Uh, this is facing north, of course. Whoops. My property is, uh, this one right here. Um, so, basically, the crux of the issue is with the, um, extraordinary growth that's happened in northern Lincoln County, uh, more and more rooftops, driveways, uh, parking lots, all that has gone into place, there's less natural land for the water to be absorbed as it has over the years. And as a result, that water's coming through in this portion is in the Beaver Creek watershed. As you can see over on this side, this is a, uh, a bigger flow area that comes, uh, underneath I twenty-nine and cuts across that way. So, with the amount of building that's gone on to the north, more water is coming over the land and being forced down. To the north of me on four hundred and seventy-first Street, there's a, um, uh, farmer that put, uh, had a sixteen-inch culvert to access, uh, over and approached to access this field. He replaced that with a twenty-four-inch, uh, culvert without pulling a, uh, permit from the township. Then about a year after that, he went and dug it up again, and put in a second twenty-four-inch culvert, increasing the capacity of flow from sixteen inches to forty-eight inches. I brought this board before the township, because as I've been told by the staff here at the county, they have nothing to do with it, because it's on the township road. The township went and talked to the landowner, and the landowner basically said, if you don't like it, take me to court. So, from the north, I have, uh, increased water flow from sixteen to forty-eight inches, that's coming straight down into my property. From over on the east, there's a development two miles to the north, and that water, because of, uh, crossing, it would be four hundred and seventy, four hundred and seventy-second Street, because that drainage way is plugged, it's forcing the water to come back over land and right, come right through here, uh, on several different spots. Going across Highway two seventy-six, there's a thirty-inch culvert right here, and there's a thirty-inch culvert right here. So, all of this water comes streaming down this way. Um, and in the infinite wisdom of the design, they put in four ninety-degree turns. So, instead of going straight underneath the road and flowing down into the, what becomes a creek further downstream, it makes a ninety-degree turn here, in my yard, it makes another ninety-degree turn. Then, once it goes through the road, makes another ninety-degree turn, then a fourth ninety-degree turn to head towards the south. On the other side of the road, it's the same thing, it makes a ninety-degree turn, goes down here, actually makes a hundred and twenty-degree turn, because the pipes are hanging a little bit this way, and then flows back around. At this point here, um, we have a hundred and fourteen inches worth of culvert that is crossing, uh, one sixteen down here, just off of the map, uh, where it crosses the township road, it chokes down to sixty-six inches. So, there's a natural choke point that's built into, um, this, uh, flow scenario. A couple of years ago, uh, Commissioner Schmidt came out and visited, and, uh, there were holes in the road, uh, at all of these points where the culverts were, because the road was caving in underneath. And, um, so we were able to get replacement culverts put in. However, the replacement culverts that went in, went from smooth concrete, uh, which are the original pipes that were in here, three here, one here, and one here. These two, well, all of them were replaced with smooth concrete and went to corrugated metal. Um, according to a University of Iowa, uh, culvert flow study, which, as I'm told from my engineering friends, uh, is considered the gospel in the world of, um, of drainage flow. Uh, this study was done, I believe, in nineteen twelve, uh, and the science has not changed on this. A thirty-inch concrete pipe, uh, uh, will discharge thirty-two percent more water than a thirty, thirty-inch metal pipe. So, by replacing those pipes with same size, because upsizing is not allowed with a, without a hydrology study, um, in essence, it has choked down the flow, uh, through these by thirty-two percent. I brought this up to the staff here, they disagree with the, uh, scientific assessments I have and the, uh, study that I'm referencing here. So, my ask to you is that the township is unwilling, they had to replace these culverts, because this road gets washed out, every time at this point, we get more than about an inch and a half of rain. Um, this road goes underwater, my yard is completely flooded, and I'm to the point where I just about have water coming through my shop, which is my place of business. My end driveway here is, is underwater, so what I'm requesting is that we take out these ridiculous four nineties that make no engineering sense whatsoever, and at least put in a straight pipe to go through, so that the water can actually flow without causing a choke point. Additionally, while I realize that we do not have a hydrology study, the next, um, culverts that are downstream from this point on this side are two six-foot culverts. Those are the next in line that cross, uh, two hundred and seventy-fifth Street, or two hundred and seventy-seventh Street, sorry, uh, cause it's going south. I would ask that we at least put in the same type culvert to go through there, so that the water can flow straight down, instead of making all those turns, uh, and thus flooding my neighbor's yard over here. Additionally, since there's so much water coming from the north, I would ask that this pipe be replaced at least with the same size, instead of the, you know, thirty-inch metal, which has degraded the flow rate by thirty-two percent. Um, as for this side over here, this really needs a, a box-type culvert, because with the auto auction is put in, put in place, uh, way over here, which is a, a very large parking lot, probably a couple of acres, all of that water flow, despite the retention ponds they put in place, once those are full, all that water just comes screaming down this way, and eventually, uh, flows over into, uh, into my yard as well, plus flooding out my neighbor. So, I'm just asking if we can go and address these, um, issues, and at least get some kind of a plan in place. I've been before this body over the last eight years, asking for this, I've written detailed reports, I've provided pictures. Most of you have been out there and visited with me on site, a couple of years ago. Um, I attempted to work with Commissioner Poppins and set up a tiger team to go and address these issues, and, uh, nothing ever came of that, despite my emails requesting meetings to go and address these issues. So, I'm just asking for some kind of assistance, so we can come up with a plan forward, um, so that we can have drainage. I'm certainly pro-growth, I like to see that we have a lot of exciting businesses, entrepreneurs that I work with, uh, in, in my job, in my civilian capacity, and I'd like to see that continued growth. But, uh, when I've, when I look through the budget here, I'm a little bit troubled in that I don't see any money allotted for drainage studies, or any drainage cleanup or drainage improvements, uh, other than, uh, in Department forty-two, twenty-three and floodplain management, uh, there's a budget of eighteen hundred dollars, uh, for floodplain development permits. That's the only thing I was able to find in this budget. So, um, again, I stand by for any questions that any commissioners may have.
Tom, I went to, uh, the Harrisburg Cemetery, I think the Sunday before Memorial Day, when we had quite a bit of rain, and I know I went by your place, and I thought, oh, good, there's no water standing and so forth, and then that night, we had a considerable amount of rain, and the next thing I know, I saw pictures, and you were pretty well flooded. And, uh, I, I couldn't believe, you know, how much water you had acquired in your area. And, uh, I, I know, too, it would seem to me, uh, it would be an easy fix, just to have that water flow straight south, and to make all those ninety-degree turns, it's very difficult for water to make those ninety-degree turns, so. You know, if at all possible, I think that would perhaps solve a lot of problems for you.
So, thank you for recognizing that, um, to point out, I have two rain gauges in my yard. Both of them had, uh, just over one inch and a quarter from that rainfall. Um, I don't own any livestock, I don't own any corn. Um, my yard on both sides was covered with about six inches deep worth of, um, horse poop and, um, uh, corn stalks, neither of which that I have. And my family and a couple of friends, we spent twelve hours just trying to move all of that and, and get rid of it, and again, that's just a real challenge that we face.
Any other questions for Mr. Stendrum?
A couple, Ms. German, um, when I look at elevation maps, Tom, but help me out, what's the highest you ever remember the water coming up to the home?
Uh, so it actually in twenty, I'm sorry, get my date straight here, twenty fourteen, um, it actually flooded our basement out, I had just finished it. And, uh, we took on about four inches of water in our basement now, albeit.
Did it come through a window, or it come just through the ground?
No, it, um, our septic tank, um, there's a, uh, like a drain valve on top of it where the lift station is, and there was so much water in the yard, that it ended up going down that tube, and it backflowed. Now, I have taken corrective action from that, and I put in, had it all dug up, and I put in a, a guillotine hard stop. So, if we get immense amounts of rain, I can go out there and shut it off. Now, I can't use the, any water drainage in our house, cause it's cut off and going to the septic tank, but I've eliminated the possibility of that septic tank backflowing into our house. Uh, it has not flowed through the concrete walls, or gotten up to the windows. Additionally, in the back of the house, I went and had this regraded, and you can't really see it, but there's a two, we shot a two-inch slope from here down to the pipe in the corner over here, so I had the yard regraded, so at least we have a little bit of slope away from the house. But at this point, the amount of water that's coming down, I, I don't anticipate that that's gonna be survivable for the long term.
It looks, from the grade, it'd have to be two feet over the road for quite a stretch to actually come up to the house, is that? My point being, it's, I'm, yes, I do believe the culverts are limiting some, but there seems to be a much bigger issue, because if it can get two feet over the road and it's still backing up, there's something downstream that is limiting this, that, that we're not looking at.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I mean, the limitation's right here, I mean, you have a built-in choke point, you have thirty inches worth of culvert, and that's the only thing to drain this entire section.
When were those, uh, smooth concrete converted to, uh, corrugated metal?
I believe that was the summer of twenty nineteen, and, uh, those smooth concrete ones, from my understanding, talking to my neighbor, has been here since before the freeway was in, those are the original, I guess, like, just drainage culverts that were put in all the fields, cause this was farmland, uh, twenty years ago.
Tom, what happens? Downstream, you take your ninety-degree turns, or your choke points, as you said. What happens downstream, or down that road, if that was to be one straight line? What happens down there? Is there a way, an outlet down there, or will we, or would that cause adverse effect on some property owners down there because of the amount of water that would come straight down?
Sir, uh, thank you for that question. Um, first, in that last rain that we had this spring, um, being the natural adventurous person I am, I hopped in my kayak, and from this point right here, I actually took that kayak all the way down and through the six-foot culverts that go on the other end. Uh, the water flow rates were pretty good, so it was actually kind of fun, aside from all the cleanup I had afterwards. But to your point, uh, going down this road, once it gets to just off the map here, it rises quite a bit and forces the water to cut through the landowners, and it goes through, um, uh, like a back pasture area, there's one home, and I'm sorry, I don't know the gentleman's name, it used to be owned by a Fink, um, and he has a bridge that goes into his yard. However, even in the seven-inch rain that we got a few years ago, um, that drainage way was big enough that it still flowed through there. The next landowner to the south is Doug Noteboom, who again, put in, uh, a bridge, uh, which again, has not gone underwater, because it's allowed for that much flow. Then the next flow downstream, it, it comes back towards, uh, the, the road, uh, and opens up, and it's farmland, it's really not farmable, it's just left for grazing pasture, and then it turns and goes underneath four hundred, or two hundred and seventy-seventh Street into those two six-foot culverts. Once it goes from there, then it meanders back to the west, but then it turns into a full-on creek. Um, and, you know, there's ample drainage capacity. From that point further, and I didn't take my, uh, kayak down there, cause I didn't know where I'd be able to get out at, and I didn't wanna have to carry it a couple of miles, but, um, I don't believe there are any other houses, or anyone that would be impacted downstream, um, from that point. It could certainly use, uh, in Harrisburg, on the north side of Willow Street, to the west of Cliff, where they built that nice big, um, um, I guess, ditch, or whatever you wanna call it, that's right by the Sanford Clinic Place. Uh, having something nice and cleaned out like that, that would flow all the way to the Big Sioux, would really be. that that would flow all the way to the Big Sioux would really be the ultimate solution for this, so there is a defined waterway to go through. Otherwise, you know, the water flows and it just cuts through the land where it sees fit. In this case over here, this road or this area here is so plugged, it's supposed to flow down through here, but what's happened, because it's gotten plugged with dirt and drifted dirt over the years and pushed in rock from this road, it is now cutting a line right across this landowner, and so he's unable to farm any of this because of the size of that trench that goes across here. Because over time, it's just, you know, cut it out. It's not Grand Canyon size, but it's on its way.
Yeah, that particular piece has been kind of a non-farm for quite some time.
Tom, you had mentioned the two cement culverts were changed. Were any of the other, you indicated the 90-degree turns, were those changed after the homes were built there, or was that before the homes were built there?
No, this was original, and I'm not sure as to why they would have put the culvert in setback that far from the corner, especially when the corner, if you look at the topography maps, is the low point. You know, again, we're going back 70, maybe 80 years as to when the culvert was not put in here, and it was put in over here instead. Not sure the reasoning. This one is very apparent that this is like an overflow. So, when this is farmland, if this area got up to a certain level of water, then it would start to flow out this. But again, it just, with the amount of water that's coming from the north, that drainage plan is no longer valid.
I just wanted to make clear it wasn't something we did after the homes were built. And that area, as far as I know, has never actually been row crop. It's either been a pasture or just set aside acres over the years. So, I think water always has pooled there. It's just the level of pooling may have increased with development.
Yes, sir. And I, our home was built in 1995. That was prior to my arrival in South Dakota. Before that, I'm assuming it was farmland, but I haven't lived here long enough to know that.
Tom, maybe you said this, but I didn't catch it. What year did the person who put the culverts in downstream of you without permission from the township, when did that happen?
So, that was 20, I want to say it was 2018.
So, that would have been before the corrugated metal was put in by the
Yeah, and just as an example, this is what was in, this is what was in before, and this is what was in after. And then, since this point, a second one of these culverts has been added in. So, we went from this at, you called a 16-inch pipe, but it's actually not even that much. It's only, you know, 14 and a half inches of interior to this, which is now 48 inches of interior movement, albeit with the reduced flow rates of the metal, you know, that cuts that flow down a little bit. But nonetheless, and what I don't have pictured here is my driveway right here on the side. So, this culvert, which again is another original that was put in, was a 24-inch concrete. It's now starting to erode out the whole driveway because of the amount, the volume of water and the force at which it's coming, albeit I was able to kayak down that property at a pretty good clip when it was full. The force that's hitting that, it's eroding away that culvert, and eventually is going to take out my driveway.
For those of you on the commission, I know when I was more active on the township board and so forth, when we tried to replace culverts and wanted to use FEMA grants, we were told that we had to use, again, corrugated steel culverts versus concrete. And I know we replaced some culverts as a result of that using that grant. But again, I'm not saying it's not impossible to replace them with concrete.
I'd like to add to that. It's my understanding that the concrete culverts come from a vendor that's out of state. We have a tax-paying resident within Lincoln County that owns a company called SEMCAST that manufactures concrete pipe, and I've had discussions with Carl, and he would be more than willing to work with Lincoln County. And, you know, his concrete pipes will last for 100 years, and I've never understood the logic behind these corrugated metal ones because inherently, when water sits in there, because they're corrugated, they're going to sit in there until it dries out. They rust out through the bottom, and I look at the pipes where my driveway approach is right here, and it's all rusted out on the bottom, and it's been there for now. I was installed in 1995, so that would be, what, 20, about 20 years.
Anything else, Tom? Any other questions for Mr. Stendrum?
One other, Ms. German. The township on that south culvert that crosses 471st, they haven't improved that at all yet either, have they?
So, in FEMA money, three years ago, and I don't remember, so every year, this road gets washed out, and the ditch over here gets filled up with gravel. So, the culverts got so washed out that they decided to replace them, but they replaced them with, again, it went from concrete like this of the same size to corrugated metal like this, but they did not increase the size at all. It's at 60, let's say 66, yeah, it's at 66 inches, but it's actually been reduced in flow because you went from smooth concrete to corrugated metal. So, if that's cut down by 32%, that's a significant downflow again, so increasing the amount of choke to go from 114 to 66 here. And they cited that, oh, we don't have a hydrology study, and we can't flood people down, we can't risk getting sued by people downstream for flooding them, so we can only replace them with the same-size culvert, even though one of the members of the township board, who is an engineer by trade, knows that a smooth concrete pipe and a corrugated metal do not have the same flow rates.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Is there any other public comment for the drainage board?
I have one question. Terry, for you, Terry, is, we pretty much, do we add something to your budget ever for drainage, or you just figure it in, or we don't really appropriate anything in the budget for draining? Those of you who have been on the commission longer than I have.
I have no line item for drainage. I mean, I set aside, you know, some funding to purchase culverts to replace any, but I don't have a line item for doing drainage ditches or ditch cleaning. That's just part of our operating and maintenance costs.
Okay. Thank you.
Just a question on the Nine Mile Creek study, the Wink study. Has that, anything been done with that? Has that been updated with the growth of Harrisburg and their drainage plans and stuff? Or did we just kind of forget about this one?
I don't know that any plan has been implemented to take an effect. It is a tool used with the municipalities when they're looking at making some changes and stuff. Unfortunately, that anything that's going to get implemented takes a huge amount of resources, i.e. money. So, until the budget allows us to do something like that, no. There's nothing that's been, other than using it as a tool to work with land that does change and/or the municipalities as they're looking at drainage, so.
Have we been using that study? I was in here a couple of weeks ago on replanning and zoning in a rezone area, and it's definitely, drainage along Nine Mile Creek was an issue, and there's nobody slapping fingers or hands or anything about what's being done up there. So, I wonder if we just wasted this $30,000 because it's definitely changing. Harrisburg is changing their drainage plans.
Unfortunately, we have, once they've moved that boundary of where their jurisdiction is or where their boundary is, we're taking off any powers from them. All it becomes is a document to talk about, unfortunately.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike.
It's the reality. Yeah, I mean, you're talking about different government entities that have no power over each other's. There's, the state doesn't mandate that we work together when we're looking at these things. I think that falls in their powers to require a cooperative effort when it comes to drainage. Right now, we're all treading water individually.
I'm glad you said that, Mike, because we've been working on this for 20 years, and I don't expect anything to get done. It's 20 years, nothing's happened. I feel sorry for these guys that are sitting here thinking that the county's going to help you out. You might as well go home because you're wasting your time. These people are wasting their time. They're wasting my time because it's not going to happen. The only reason I come up here and do this every time, because he's writing stuff down, I'm leaving a paper trail. Someday, I mean, how many culverts, bridges have been washed out on Nine Mile Creek? The lawyers are coming out, and the lawsuits are going to start flying. And I'm leaving a paper trail, knowing that this is not a problem that's just come up. It's a problem that's existed, and we have failed to do anything about it. We can get in trouble for doing things that we shouldn't. We can also get in trouble for failing to do things that we should have done. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Next time, I'll have the drainage meeting. I won't waste my time coming down here because nothing's happened.
Anybody else? Can I do a re-credit? Sure.
So, a long time ago, one of my mentors told me, "Never bring up a problem without having a solution." So, a quick solution to this overall drainage problem that I see within the county is to start a revolving capital fund. For every building permit from here forward that is going to be issued out within Lincoln County, a 10% assessment should be added on to that, going into a capital fund, which the county drainage board could then use to go and apply and give out some budget dollars to go and address this long term because the growth is going to continue to be here. And in lieu of raising taxes on the individual landowners that are getting affected by this, is to go after some of those development dollars. Yes, that will slow some of the growth, but that may not necessarily be a bad thing because we'll have some dollars to go and address some of these issues and develop more capacity downstream. And I'd be happy to join in on a working group to go and further develop that idea. I manage a working capital fund in the Navy that we do similar for fuel farm projects to go in and expand capacity and clean up fuel messes there. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom. Any members of the commission got any more comments? Okay, hearing none. Yeah. I'll entertain them. Oh. Oh, okay. I thought you were coming back for another bite at the apple.
Move to come out of the drainage board back into our regular commissioner meeting.
Second. Got a motion in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
All right, we're back in regular session. I believe there is need for executive session today. I'll ask for executive session under SDCL 1-25-2, sub 1, sub 3, and sub 4.
So, move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Clerk will call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
All right, we'll be in executive session. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Motion in second. Clerk will call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Do I motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
What? Thought we're done?
Yes. But, so, next week on the 15th, we're going to have budget discussions on the agenda again. We have to have the budget passed by September 27th.
Do we have to have two public meetings?
Well, it's not a public meeting, but any changes we have to make, you either have to pass it or make changes, and every change from now on out has to go by motion, so.
Can we pass it next 15?
You sure can.
Okay.
Okay, with that, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second, or motion.
Second.
Clerk will call a roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
We're adjourned.